Thank you for joining us this evening. Our regular scheduled meeting of the Park City City Council on March 10th, 2020 at 7:00 P.M. Marla, would you call the roll?
John Lynn Hare.
Here.
George Glover. Ben Sausetta.
Here.
Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight Pastor Bill Coons is going to lead the invocation and Councilmember Tom Jones is going to lead in the pledge. If everybody please stand.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening. Father, I ask your special blessings upon the city of Park City, upon its elected leaders, upon those who make the city work in the day-to-day operations. Father, I ask that the council will do the work of the people as unto you. They will do it well. Father, we ask for blessings on the city of Park City. For you are the source of our blessings. Father, we thank you for your faithfulness to us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. John?
Motion to approve the agenda as it was presented.
And Jim, second that. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Not seeing any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. We don't have anything for awards or presentations this evening, and nobody signed up to speak at public forums, so we'll move on to staff reports and we'll start with our city administrator. You were going to talk about the bridge real quick, dates?
Yes, sir. I didn't have a formal report repaired, but I did want to mention as far as the 61st Street Bridge progress, folks may have seen that there's three signs out right now currently that's advertising between March 17th, 18th, and 19th that eastbound traffic on 61st Street is going to be closed between 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. That's the 17th through the 19th between 9:00 a.m. and 4:00. We tried to get them to keep it open similar to what they did last fall, but it's a different type operation for this one, so for those three days, it's going to impact eastbound traffic on 61st Street. That's it, sir.
Thanks, Sean. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion? John?
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
And Ben?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. That brings us to item six under new business, which is discuss and consider Park City Youth Baseball Financial Report. Thank you.
Yep. Do you have questions or you have?
We've got, we just got the profit and loss, and if you just kind of want to go over it and let us know how the program's going, that'd be great.
So we have one typo on there on the cost of each sold, concession stands $6,500, which is $1,400. It's been a lot, just field ground, $2,500, Southwest Voice Club. Legal expression, legal expression, it's a 100. Others, the, 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 anything you want to talk about with just maybe some of the successes you've seen over the past few years or how everything's going? I think, gosh, I've been here for seven years, two terms at a time. This year we'll have seven. Typically we'll have 30 to 35 teams around the area during the Friday, Saturday. I had Southwest, we have Knicks, so we went down, we've got too many teams at the field, so we'll have maybe a Saturday plan for Buckley, then, then, and then. I think great, I think great. Down. It's, it's, it's. George?
Who's here? You sell tickets and stuff, how do you do that? How do you control the ticket sales? Who watches the games?
Yeah, so we have a, behind the concession stand is the gate right there, so when we come in the gate, we start trying to all for the day. And the tickets, right there.
So the people sitting out there in the parking lot can just watch it, where is it?
And the local, the, 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 the.
Anybody else have any questions?
John, upgrades? Is there any? I know we've talked about this several times over the years, in the seven years, I didn't think it was that long, but what, I mean, what do we need to do? What can we do? You said the registration stuff is down on people playing. What, I know there's a couple other games in town or fields in town now. What, I mean, what do we need to do to make some improvements now? I mean, it's been a while, but.
There's always improvements we can do. We have lots of this field on the floor when we first started out, sort of, leave, what we done there, but there's always improvements. The backstops, I mean, everybody in town has got the netting now, the big chain link. It's a long, it's a long, you know.
I'm just wondering this, like, I mean, I guess maybe come up with, I feel like maybe as a partner, like we work where, whether it's something where we share of cost of it, where the city does too, or even we have city crews as well, but maybe we could get your top three things on your wish list and work with the park board and.
Yeah, that'd be wonderful, wonderful.
And through the city, and maybe we could at least come up with something. I mean, maybe some of, you know, a two-year plan or a five-year plan or something like that, but I feel like if we don't do anything, that's where it gets out of hand, and next thing you know, we got to come up with a big chunk of money to it.
I think it's great, you know, we haven't got any money at all from, you know, tourism, but things are pretty soft to say.
Yeah. And did you guys do tourism money this year? Did you do the tourism money this year?
Not yet today, but we are, we're going to make the task.
Requesting, right. Okay.
And so it's coming up very soon.
I got you. Okay, thank you.
Tom?
Well, I just heard the attendance is down. Is that just here or is that across the board?
And nationwide baseball from eight to 14 dropping six or eight of them a year. I've done that for ages.
Okay.
Just an explanation, different ways. I have, I have seven kids walking, it's called walking, it's, 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 it's not a duty thing, it's stable, it's different. We're citizens, we're, 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 we're,
The residential code for the actual direction of that structure. So with coming back and bringing in 120 square feet, which was actually for years was the exemption for that in the residential code. It would allow us to say, hey, they're going to have to build these structures under the minimum standards of the residential code for exterior and meet the zoning requirements for the setback requirements. That's the reason why. I've looked at this, I've kind of actually for four or five months. And so this is the reason why I brought it forward.
Okay. Melvin?
What are the codes at the other surrounding cities?
Okay, the city of Derby requires a billing permit after 120 square feet for detached structure. But also Derby requires a permit for any detached accessory structure, which is kind of interesting. Bel Air is 120 square feet, but I will say that city of Wichita is at 200 square feet, which is where we're at right now on ours for detached structure.
That Valley Center?
I didn't check Valley. Well, I can't answer that. I should have checked that.
That's all right.
Okay. Tom?
Well, I've got two spots on here that got my attention, and I know we've had some violations on them in the past in the city. And that's number two, playhouses and treehouses having single and multi-level floors with or without roofs. So people have been known to put a treehouse up out in their backyard and then frame it in and close it up, put a door on it, call a shed, and then put the bottom in it. And I'm concerned there's no square footage there or anything, and it can be as high as what they want it. That's one issue that I've got. That's playhouses and treehouses. And then the other one I got is item nine. And if you have a pool over 24 inches high, you have to pull a permit. And most of the pools that are sold are 40 inches above ground. Play pool would be 24.
I don't have that in front of me for the pools.
I think the pool 24 inch minimum height's pretty strict.
Okay.
So I'd rather see it 40 to 48.
Well, the only thing I was bringing forward this evening was just the accessory structure that's in the exception. We're not, we wasn't addressing the other ones.
Okay. Did I jump ahead? If I did, I apologize.
I didn't look at that. Was it the other ones?
Okay, that's the next one. I've jumped, I'm flipping through my charts here and I'm missing, so.
There was only one change to the ordinance amendment you have in front of you that Bob's addressing, and that was changing the figure in subsection one from 200 to 120.
Okay.
There were no other changes.
Okay. Well, I was looking on down through the ordinance, and item two and item nine are an issue two.
Well, we could address those, Tom. We can take a look at those. I mean, sure.
I saw the red for the 200 to the 120, but I jumped down and read the rest of the article, and I found those to be issues two.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
You might give some clarification on what you're looking for in the treehouses.
On the treehouses, I could see if it's something you go buy, prefab, and you put it up, you're going to have a standard size, and they may or may not have a roof on them. But we've got some instances out here where people put poles up and stood something on top of it, and then come back in, and they called it a fort or a treehouse or whatever, and it was larger than 100 square feet. And then they enclosed it and made a shed out of it. And so we need some kind of restriction on that item, whether it be square footage and height requirements or...
Well, sir, if I may, at that point in time, if you had a playhouse and all of a sudden you wanted to enclose it in, both put a roof on it, then it becomes a detached one, an accessory building. So it would still fall under the same 120 square foot.
But it's already there. And what I'm saying is it could be 200 square feet on stilts, and there's nothing to stop them from putting it up and calling it a fort.
Yes, sir.
Well, Tom, square footage has never been addressed on the playhouse. You brought up a good point. We can take a look at that.
Okay. Those two issues, and one of them's the pool. Most of the pools you go buy are 40 inch above ground, and we've got a 24 inch restriction. I caught that. And I apologize, I was looking at the whole ordinance that we were provided, not just the one.
As far as the pool and the 24 inch, that is not required to have a permit.
Correct. But if I buy a 40 inch deep round 12-foot pool, then I have to pull a permit even though it's just a little pool.
That is right, but that's never really been accurately sought and enforced.
Okay. But it's on the books.
That is correct. Yeah, it is on the books.
Okay. I'm good. I apologize for taking it further than I intended to go. I just saw issues.
George?
Does this count for buildings on foundations or on skids? I know a lot of the backyard.
Oh, that's a good question. Still in the IRC code, if it's less than 400 square feet, it doesn't require a permanent foundation. So however, you can't put a permanent foundation in easement, no matter what, any structure in easement like that. But right now, if we left it where it's at, the 120 square feet, if we move back to 120 square feet, they could actually put a detached structure in the easement, but it could not be on a concrete slab. It has to be on skids.
Okay. Well, and you know, for years around here, they always said it was 140 feet. If you ask someone, I never looked at the paperwork, but if you asked someone, you were always told 140 feet.
That was in the code for, I didn't have gray hair when that was being enforced. It's been a long time. And I would like to do more research, see why it actually went to 200 square feet. 200 square feet, we're starting to get into a lot of different issues. We can discuss, George, sometime and come and talk to you about it.
No, that's okay. I just, through the years, I've heard that. And I know there's a lot of backyard sheds and stuff that are sold that are 10 by 14, which would be 140 feet. And that's why I asked. You see them advertised all the time.
Yes.
And there's several of them here in town. And I suppose they were probably put in in those years when you asked someone in the city hall, and they'd say about 140 square feet. And people put them in. And I don't have one. Mine's 10 by 12.
Jim?
Just to clarify, but they could still put them in, they just need a permit to do it.
Yes, yes. And then we could say, hey, you're going to have to meet your setback requirements and quality materials is still minimum. I'm trying to make that express that.
Okay. John?
So someone that exceeds the 140 square feet, 120, I'm sorry, they would have to meet the building codes.
They'd have to meet the minimum building codes, yes.
Can you just give me a little example of what?
Well, they'd be an approved exterior siding, for one thing. We wouldn't, they wouldn't be going out and buying some, what they call a CVX plywood and paintment.
Lap siding?
Well, lap siding would be approved. There's a whole surround of different materials they could use for exterior out of the code. Except they would define that the material used on it would have to be approved for exterior.
Like not required to do insulation or something like that?
Oh, no, no. No, accessory structure is not considered habitable, even though maybe it is once in a while.
So someone that buys one of these ones, they just deliver and drop in?
Yes.
Would that be a part of this? They have to have a permit?
You're talking about a prefab one?
Yeah, like a prefab, they just drive and drop it down your backyard?
Yes, it'd have to meet the minimum codes. But the ones that are manufacturing those prefabs sheds are making sure they're meeting those.
Okay, let's just say I want to get one next weekend, after this is in place. I need to call you and say I need a permit because I'm having one delivered next month.
Come in and we'll talk about where you're buying it from, what materials you're going to be using on it. Mainly, the interest is where you're going to set it at, and what type of materials you're going to build it out. Is it going to be approved exterior materials?
And if it's sitting on the skids like that, it has to be tied down or anything like that?
Well, it doesn't have to be tied down unless, that's a good question, unless that they're thinking about, maybe they want to run a light out to it, a little electricity to it. Then it's going to need to be tied down.
Okay, cool. Just for people watching, want to have an idea of what we're voting on here.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, do we have a motion already?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Tom?
Well, I'm sitting here, this is something that's going to have to be published if approved. And I was wondering if we maybe ought to defer this for two weeks and let staff look at those other two items before we vote on it? Because we're going to be bringing it back and doing it again, so.
Get a recommendation from staff maybe on that? Do you want to do that, or?
That's what I'm asking. I mean, as it's written tonight with those two other issues.
I think it's going to be a couple more weeks if we take a look at the other two issues brought up.
You say it'd be more than two weeks?
Oh, it'd have to. There's, yeah, there'd be a lot of discussion on that.
I just hate to see us go pay to publish this and then a month, do it again, so. Unless there's a reason we need to do that tonight.
Sir, we can bring it back. There's not, I just would like to confirm what the council's direction would be for number nine. Because again, my question is, okay, so if somebody goes out and buys a 12-foot diameter or 40-inch tall swimming pool, do we think that they should be required a permit or not? And the reason why we have a permit is, one, that's a rather large amount of water. We want to make certain that it's in the appropriate place. And then also, at the same time, now you're getting into an area to where it could impact the safety of children. Does that impact fences that need to be required? The 24 inch is there for, if you're buying a kiddie pool, fine. We're not having concerns about, so much of concerns. There's always going to be a concern anytime there's water, but that's the only thing. I hear what you're saying, I just want to make certain that we understand what would council's preference be as far as the direction that we take that.
I would be past having a gallon number. I mean, the one right in front of it, you can have water storage above ground, 5,000 gallons of water, that's a lot of water with no permit. So, I mean, maybe we use that as a rule of thumb.
Okay.
I'm at a loss on that, too. I just found it, you can't buy a pool that way and take it home and set it up because they're all 40 inches deep or so, I mean, you know, above-ground pools. It would be a kiddie blow-up pool or a little hard-side pop-up, so that would be...
That's not exactly true. You can buy one and set it up, you just have to get a permit for it.
Well, I understand that.
This is not, these provisions here don't prohibit people from doing the things that are set out there, they just require a building permit.
I know people that go out and put one up every spring and take it down every fall. And so that mean they have to put a permit in every year? I mean, there's all kinds of gotchas out there, and I just want to understand it. But this is very restrictive, so.
Part of the reason we have the International Residential Code is because it's a code just like most other places have, and so people that move from jurisdiction to jurisdiction have some certainty on what the provisions are of building codes. I'm a little uncertain about what number two you wish to tweak as far as treehouses go and playhouses.
Well, I'd say there, if it was purchased to be set up or built something like to be set up, like a playhouse like you see outside Sam's or somewhere like that, it's different than if I go out and put four 4x4s or six 4x4s in the ground and build me a big slab up on top of it and then start closing it. I'm at a loss, too. It's just, it just, I could help, but I'm not prepared to do that tonight. I just know that we've got instances where stuff like that's been built in town, and it's a shed now. It's been enclosed, and it's a shed. And it's invisible from the street, and there's nothing you can go about it because it's pre-existing.
Well, that's not exactly true.
I think some of that's addressed by the change that's being proposed this evening. And kind of to co-tell on what Doug's talking about, people kind of get sideways on building codes, but it protects not only the homeowner, but the future homeowner and neighbors around them when you buy a house. If I go buy a house, I'm hoping the people pulled the permit when they were finished in the basement and got checked out, and I didn't buy something that's going to cause me a lot of heartache and pain down the road. So, I mean, that's what I'm trying to get at, Tom. You're throwing this out, but we need to know what you're talking about. Like, I want a treehouse ordinance that's no more than 80 square feet or something. I mean, what are you saying?
I would say that if I'm going to build a fort, it shouldn't be any bigger than a shed that you can build without a permit.
And we could just throw the 120 square foot limitation on that as well. I think the idea or the premise behind that is somebody wants to go out and build a playground for their children out back and everything. Why should we have to, if you're going to build it larger than 120 square foot, which is a 10 by 12 footprint, which is a pretty large playset, then again, we're not prohibiting anybody from doing anything. It's just a matter of pay a $35 billing permit so that we make certain that it's located in the same, in the right place, and that it's built accordingly, so that some child doesn't get hurt on it or somebody doesn't get hurt. So we could just make that as well, 120 square foot.
Okay. I just looked at it being wide open.
And the, you know, the pool's another, I think you answered that question, too. You know, you got a 40-inch tall pool that's 12 foot wide, and somebody does something wrong, and it's like running into the neighbor's basement window. Probably would have been good if we'd had somebody that had some expertise that could have come out and maybe helped with placement or where it should have been.
You've got the same thing with the water tank right in front of it, so.
All right.
It's up to 5,000 gallons above ground, don't have to have a permit. That's a lot of water.
And John?
I'm going to make a motion that we approve this to reduce it down to 120. I'm sorry, down at the bottom, I got to get back to the top to get the words, but I'll make a motion, we approve it as presented. All right, I'm getting there.
All right. Item 10.
Yeah, thank you. So I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance number 1090-2020, amending section 4506 of the municipal code of the Park City, Kansas, of the city of Park City, Kansas pertaining to work that may be done without necessity of a permit under International Residential Code and repealing the original of said section 4-506.
Jim?
I'd second that.
Okay, did you have any discussion?
I've got my button pressed.
You do? Go ahead, George. I don't have your light.
Well, I had a question, you know, as Sean was talking about fences, these backyard swimming pools, are you requiring fences?
There's a fence required for swimming pool, yes.
Well, you know, I bring that up because I, you know, when we first started building these retention ponds and stuff, you know, I did not like the one over on off Grove, and I still don't like it. Because you take one full step out there, and you're in, you're in all the way to the bottom. Those walls are straight down, and I wanted that thing fenced when they built it. And to me, that's an attraction for young people. And I'm one of these people that think as a city, we ought to lead by example. And if we're going to require citizens to fence our water holes or swimming pools or whatever, you know, those retention ponds around town are a magnet for young people. And yet, there's no requirement for fences at all. And I can tell you, that one over on off Grove is dangerous. Because I know it, I saw it when it was dry, when it, before it ever had to have a drop of water in it. And that thing is straight down. Someone take a step, a five-year-old take a step off there, and they're gone. And I don't know why it's not fenced myself for safety. And thank God, nothing has happened over these years. It hasn't happened, but the potential is certainly there. And I just, I just think what's good for the goose, is good for the gander. If we're going to require citizens to do something, then we ought to be willing to do it ourselves. And if we're going to require citizens to fence off water stuff, we ought to be willing to do the same thing ourselves. Because it's a safety issue, that's why we're doing it. And those open ponds are certainly a safety issue.
Tom?
I want to clarify that what I'm talking about tonight, that's not part of the UCC here, is it? Or the International Residential Code? Those line items that we've got listed are Park City line items, they're not in the code, right?
Those are right out of the International Residential Code.
They are in it.
That's the code, word for word.
Yes, right.
Okay. And then all we're doing is modifying one of them.
To, back to 120 square feet from 200.
Okay.
All right. Not seeing any further discussion. We have a motion and a second. Marla, would you call the roll?
John Lynn here.
Aye.
George Glover. Ben Socetta.
No.
Melvin Kerr.
Nay.
Tom Jones.
Nay.
George Capps.
Aye.
Randy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
Aye.
All right, and that fails three to four. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Doug, for your work. We'll move on to item 11, which is discuss and consider a mutual aid contract with Bel Air. Doug?
I'll let Bob address this. You have the summary sheet in front of you. This is a mutual assistance agreement to cover the, when either Bel Air or the city of Park City is a little short-staffed as far as making building inspections.
Okay.
I had a good visit with Keith, the inspector at Bel Air, and he and I discussed about sharing responsibilities when we're on leave or on vacation. And I think it's a good thing to have this in for us to do. It allows us to keep functioning in the inspection area, and Keith would be more than welcome to, I believe he said he'd get it approved there, where we can exchange on vacation times. It only would be done for necessary, you need to do this inspection. It wouldn't be a, come over here and cover for an eight-hour at a time. It'd be just to do the pertinent, another thing about it, if we get into disaster, and I hope it never happens, because I've been to three of them, it would allow where Keith or I could come in and help each other in inspections, if we get a damage, which I hope never happens, but that would be in place, agreement.
Okay.
So.
George?
Are you the only one that does inspections here, or do any of the code enforcement officers do any of the inspections?
As far as billing inspections, I'm the only one that does those, yes.
Okay. Ben?
I'm going to make a motion to approve the agreement with the city of Bel Air, providing for mutual assistance with building and related inspection services.
Melvin?
I'll second that.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And that motion passes 7-0. Brings us to item 12, which is discuss and consider stormwater drainage maintenance policy. I think we got a video, too. I don't know when that falls in place, but.
Okay. Thank you and good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Okay, what I've got before you is our stormwater drainage and maintenance policy. Give you a little background. Ordinance 215-90 was approved May 8, 1993. It requires any owner, agent, leasie, or tenant to maintain the area or property between the property lines of their home or business and the center line of any adjacent street or alley, including sidewalks, streets, alleys, easements, right-of-way, and all other areas, public or private. Over the years, though, Public Works has taken on and maintained several areas that fall into this definition. At the request of the Stormwater Advisory Board, and due to the limited resources in Public Works, the department and staff has identified areas that have previously, that we've previously maintained, and then created a drain water, our stormwater drainage maintenance policy based off these, yeah, based off the, okay, a policy that clearly defined the areas that the city will be responsible for and the ones which we want, or which we won't in regards to the stormwater distribution system going forward. Similar ways that the roads are classified by function, the map within the policy identifies those drainage channels do, that do, that are due to the size, location, and function, and importance, the overall health of the system would be classified as arterials, and therefore would be responsible, would be the responsibility of Public Works. Additionally, staff and the IT director over the past couple of months obtained drone footage of these arterial ditches, allowing the Stormwater Advisory Board to better understand our current situation and conditions and to make recommendations for the repairs or improvements. So in our packet here, we've included the new drainage policy, which you'll see, and then the map along with the, a map along with it, which, I don't know, a little back history. I've been, I was informed, you know, Sean informed me today, and in the past, currently, Public Works, our street department, we're mowing 128 lane miles. Yeah, and that's pretty excessive when you're coming to a department with two men, you know, two working men and a supervisor or parks, you know, between our parks department and our water department, we're mowing 102 acres, you know, between that. By coming up with this policy and with these maps, as you can see, we're going to be doing just the main drainage canals lined in the, lined in the blue, and then the drainage ditches out here along 61st Street and hydraulic. So, I mean, it's going to cut back tremendously on us. I believe here shortly Ted's going to show you the drone footage, kind of show you the situations that we are facing. As you'll notice, you'll see some of the cleaner ditches in this drone footage, these ditches that are, the cleaner ditches, they're going to be the ones that are the further, you know, further east side of town. Yeah, that's the newest side of town. Yeah, the ones that are, you know, worse, they're the oldest side, you know, lowest part of town also. Water drains downhill. You know, as you're moving older to newer, you're making drainage improvements. Yeah, so obviously, where we're going to start making the improvements, you know, more than likely going to be on the older side of town. So recently, we did purchase a set of tracks for our skid loader, so that we can get in here and maintain some of these drainage ditches. But as soon as we do start this video, you'll be able to see some of the places we're at, so.
Okay, Mayor, Council. This is just a sampling of what our IT director Ted has done over the past couple of months. He has basically gone through every ditch identified by the Public Works Department, got the drone out, and did this at the request of the Stormwater Advisory Board. So he broke it down into several different segments, so this is just a sampling. There, we have all the videos for all of them, but this is from Hartford, from East Park View between Ashford and Beaumont. So you have an aerial view of where we're actually looking at. And then what he did is went ahead and actually flew the drone, so that way you could show it to the advisory board and say, this is the material condition of the drainage channel as it sits right now, which is going to help them make recommendations as far as improvements going forward in the future. Some of the videos, he had to stop along the way because there were trees and didn't want to wreck the drone, but that tells us where we do need to concentrate on, cleaning out some of the debris and the growth.
And I know there's a lot of drainage ditches in Park City. I would, of course, I represent Ward 3, so that's where my questions lie. The one that runs between hydraulic and Evanston, where it goes into the canal, now, that could be the ditch that's being shown right now, it could be. Now, are you saying the citizens are going to have to mow half that? Is that what you're saying?
Okay, you mean the one that runs between Denver and Evanston from hydraulic to the canal?
Right.
No, no, that's going to be, that's going to be the city.
Because that, that would be impossible for a citizen to do that. And, you know, I know, I try to be fair, but you know, on the, on the, over in Ward 2, those drainage ditches over there, we've conquered a lot of those. We've really, we've really built those up, and be honest with you, we've let these go to hell. And that's, that's the best way I can describe it.
Yes, sir, and that's the whole reason behind this policy is for us to sit there and concentrate our efforts on. There are, these are the major arterial channels that we have identified that said, hey, look, this is beyond a homeowner's capability.
It is.
Now, there are some ditches out there that, quite honestly, over the years, have kind of degraded. We may have been maintaining them over the past couple of years, but for us to look a homeowner in the eye and say, hey, look, this is your responsibility right now, what I've already told Public Works, is up front initially. There may be some ditches that is beyond their capabilities, that we may need to go in there, spend some time, money, resources to get it right, and then turn it over to them, saying, look, it's back to where a homeowner can maintain it. It is your responsibility, and technically has been since 1993, but we're going to help them get to, back to a point to where they can do that. But on these ditches here, the big ditch that you're talking But on these ditches here, the big ditch that you're talking between Denver and Evanston, that one's beyond most homeowners' capabilities. That's where we need the city to concentrate in its manpower.
But that's exactly what I was talking to the Mayor about earlier. We were talking about the broken windows from the police terminology, the ones that Giuliani and Bloomberg used in New York City to clean their city up. You know, you've got, you, you let, you let the city let something like that go, then, then you turn around and lean on the citizens to do this or that, you know, that's, that's a double standard. But broken windows deal, you, you, you're inviting, you're inviting blight and stuff. And that's why I'm glad to see this happening. I was, I was real curious when I read this, how, how this is going to work, because I understand that there's, I've heard some criticism about Ward 3, especially the horseshoe, and somewhere along the line, we quit taking care of stuff. The tree board quit. We used to keep those trees thinned out, Zach, and you probably remember when we did that. We used to thin those trees out every year, but they found somewhere else to put the money. The money went somewhere besides taking care of the neighborhood. Well, if you're gonna, if the city wants the citizens to take care of their property, the city's got to show that they're willing to carry their end of the bargain, and we're not doing it. Just tell it like it is, we're not doing it.
No, and then
And I'm glad to see this happen.
I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Sean, but after discussion, you know, with the stormwater, you know, stormwater committee, discussion with Sean, you know, talking mainly, you know, like some of, maybe like a property along, you know, Hydralic on the west end, on the west side of the road here, you know, going south, I mean, going north towards the park, you know, where it's not city, where it's not marked out here, those homeowners, like most of those people are mowing their ditches, taking care of that, that's, that's what's going to be required of the homeowners to do that. Or some of the property owners along Broadway, where we're currently mowing up Broadway, you know, those property owners are now going to be, you know, forced to go back to where this ordinance, you know, was, was, started back in 1993, and now going to have to start maintaining their own properties along Broadway in areas like that. You know, landowners, you know, what, you know, rather, you know, if it's a farmer that owns it, and he's got someone leasing his land, and that farmer's going to be responsible to either have that leasing mow up along Broadway, or they're going to have to mow it themselves. You know, that way the city's not taking care of things like that.
But I believe part of that's our, that's our, I remember when Eric was brand new, I remember asking him a question when he stood there at that podium, it was in the fall of the year, and, and all the leaves were, and all the storm deals was getting, getting stopped up, and I was asking him then, do you have the manpower to take care of it? And they worked on it, but those leaves going into the stormwater, that pollutes the water.
Sir.
That's, that's hard on stuff. And, but that's, that's our, that's our place to furnish the manpower. If, if you don't have the manpower to, to take care of this stuff, that's our fault. That's no one's fault but ours.
Yes, sir, that's, that's, that's the reason why we have proposed this maintenance policy, so that we can better utilize the manpower that we have to get done, the major arterial channels that we need to, that we should be responsible, that we are responsible for, that we haven't done before, maybe, let's say, in the, in the past couple of years.
Right, but if
Yes, sir.
You don't have the manpower, that, that buck stops up here. That's our fault.
We've got the manpower, sir.
Okay, good enough.
So I got a question for you, and might be jumping the gun here. As you identified these, have you guys started working on a plan on, like, how you're going to tackle some of this, over this next summer?
Yeah, we, yeah, that's, that's like I, like I talked before, you know, a little bit before I started here, they'd already implemented the plan as far as, as far as the equipment we would need to get in, and that's where they went ahead and started making some arrangements and switched out some of the, some of the tires on our Bobcat, and that way they could, they could kind of retrofit that, put some tracks on, on that Bobcat to fit in some of those ditches, you know, much like that, that drainage ditch between Evanston and, and Denver, between East Parkview and, or Hydralic and, and that. So, yeah, I mean, we're going to pick the worst, and, you know, definitely start downhill. I mean, because it's, that's how you do when it, when it comes to drainage anyway, so start downhill, start the worst, and, and go from there, and see exactly what we're going to be able to do, you know, and then, and just take it, you know. Of course, we're not going to be able to tackle it, you know, all at one, one time, so just, you know, probably, you know, like, you know, a three to five-year plan, see how we're, you know, that's kind of early stages of the planning, but usually everything can be tackled in a three to five-year plan, so that's kind of, that's kind of the direction I'd like to take it in.
So just, I know you probably don't have this information tonight, but next council meeting, can we just talk about how much, what our fund is now, what our account balance is
Yes, sir.
On what we've collected to go towards these projects? And then just for public information, I mean, you mentioned the Stormwater Advisory Committee. That was something that we formed. Each ward nominated somebody from their ward to serve on that committee, and I know you all have been actively meeting and, and working on that. Not only do I appreciate the staff's time, but also the people's time that are a part of that board, because they've been spending some hours working on that. Tom?
I'd like to thank the Council and the city for working on this. About 15 years ago, me and about four other people walked all the ditches, and all they've done is worse since then. There were several of them then, there were weed eater ditches, you couldn't mow them with anything other than a weed eater, and they'd, city did them once a year. So trying to get on top of this and improve it, I'm all for. When we got done, we came back to the city with recommendations, and there was no money, so it got tabled. One thing that I know that's gone on the past couple of years, I'd like to make sure we kind of rectify in the future. Ward 2, we've spent a lot of money on ditches, paving the bottom of them, getting them done, and then we do a new housing development, don't make them take it on to the pond that all the water's dipping into. Part, if, if they're in the drainage flow of something we're already working on and cleaning up, then the developer ought to be on board with finishing it to wherever we're taking the water, instead of the city coming back five years later and putting $20,000 or $30,000 in it trying to fix it. So that would be my only thing that I'd like to throw out there.
Okay, Ben?
I want to say thank you also to those on the board. It's a fun meeting sometimes, serving as the liaison, but it's, it's a good time there. Thank you for addressing a lot of these needs. I, just like George said earlier, serving in Ward 3, we hear a lot of complaints there in that area that have been neglected for a long time, and, and it's good to see some work being done there. Thank you to Ted for taking the time to fly the drone all around, although I'm sure that was somewhat fun as well. But thank you all for all the work that you all put into this. I look forward to seeing what we come up with.
John?
So I'm just wondering, is there going to be any kind of like, for the folks that live along the ditches, so they know, you know, when we get done? I mean, I just wonder if there's some people, like even rental houses and stuff, that maybe don't know it's their responsibility to take care of these ditches once. Once we take care of these, now they're in great shape, hey, all yours. So, I mean, I, I just, I don't know. The other thing I think of is something that we don't, I mean, we won't expect, but like when we go in and fix them, think, ah, they're finally fixing their ditch. I mean, the city's fixing their ditch. But we really want folks to, I mean, we want to get it back to neutral where they can handle it, but is there some kind of information that we're going to give out to folks so they know?
That's one of the things that we've discussed, not only with Public Works, but also with code enforcement. Because code enforcement's going to be the first one, or could be possibly the first one knocking at your door saying, hey, the ditch, and they're going to say, wait a minute, the city's been maintaining that for the last 10 years. So there is going to be an education factor, the same way as what Council did eight months ago with the sump pump, that, you know, there's going to be a little discretionary, there's going to be a little bit of adjustment to where people are going to say, wait a minute, this is now our responsibility, so it's our job to educate them and say, yes, it, it's been on the books since 93. Yes, we have maintained a lot of it over the years, but we're going to be concentrating on those main arterial channels. So yes, Public Works is going to be working with folks. A good example of a success story so far, we know that there's a new owner to 81 Speedway. When I first showed up here, the ditch that was out in front of 81 Speedway, it had thrown over. We had two, three, four-inch diameter cow per trees in that ditch. He asked the question, I said, you're right, that is our responsibility, we have been maintaining it. So we went in, dry weather, we cleared it all out and said, now it's yours, and he's maintaining it, and it's good. Zach has already made arrangements with Sedgwick County to take care of the, the ditch along primrose. That's still on their plan here, somewhere within the next couple of weeks, that they're going to get that one knocked down, and, and that is a common property. That is one that the city would be maintaining. It's not adjacent to any homeowners, but we're asking that particular property owner, the county, they have the resources to do that. So we're going to have to work with the, to your question, sir, we're going to have to work with residents to let them know. Some of them may call, counsel, and be a little bit upset, saying, hey, you used to do this for the last 10 years, how come you're not doing it now? Here's the reason why, so that we can concentrate on the major channels to make certain that the whole stormwater system operates properly.
Okay. I, I just, I mean, it's hard to believe by looking at this stuff, but I think at one time, these areas were great, they were great, but over time, when they're not maintained and taken care of, they erode, and, 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 you know, the other thing I always think of is, we tend to put, to fix these, like we did up on the north side, we put concrete in. But then where the concrete stops, now you got fast-flowing water, so then it tends to erode the dirt after. So everything downhill takes a beating, so it kind of just pushes it down to the next, the next part downhill, which, which, of course, the, our other problem is we're so flat, and water just wants to sit. So, yes, I applaud you, so I'm glad to hear that, and also that we can maybe get it back to where it's maintainable, and we can pass it back to the homeowners. Thank you.
George?
Well, you say 10 years, let me correct that to about 50-some years, because I've been around here since 1964, and the city has always taken care of those ditches. I cannot ever remember a time, I've lived in Ward 3 all those years, and I can never remember a time when the citizens mowed the ditches. It's always been the city, and it's not 10 years. Zach knows, Zach knows, he's been around here all these years, he knows I'm telling this straight. And, you know, that's been the policy for 50-some years, that I know of, and probably before then, before I came here. And citizens used to have to clean the culverts out themselves to keep from flooding their property, but that was neither here nor there. But as far as taking care of those ditches, city always has.
Okay, Ben?
I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve the stormwater drainage maintenance policy.
John?
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Not seeing any discussion. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes 7-0. Thank you, Zach. Brings us to item 13, which is discuss and consider a memorandum of agreement with the City of Valley Center. Chief?
This is something that, kind of lost off in the news right now. We're talking about epidemic, that type of thing, we see this with the coronavirus right now. But that, I just want to make it clear, this is not specifically, this just happened to timeout where we're talking about this right now, and this is going on in the news, so it's essentially unrelated, but, but it is, because of the circumstances. So if there were an emergency, and there was a necessity to vaccinate a large population, if everybody needed to get a vaccination, the plan is to establish points of dispensing, what they're called are pods, that's the shorthand that's used for that, throughout Sedgwick County. The effort's being led by Sedgwick County Emergency Management, and it's being parceled out to the individual cities to work on where they want to have these points of dispensing. They make, they don't refer to vaccine, per se, they use the term medical countermeasures. It could be, for instance, antibiotics instead of a vaccine, that's the reason they use that term. But nonetheless, I'll just use the term vaccine as a shorthand, because that's probably what it would be most likely. We worked with Sedgwick County Emergency Management on this as a police department, trying to locate where we would have the pod, point of dispensing for Park City. We identified roughly three places where we could do this. We were hoping that we could have a location here within Park City, and that we could partner with a couple of our local cities, our neighbors here, in order to do this. You have to understand that if this happens, if there are going to be thousands upon thousands of people who are going to respond and come to this location to get their vaccine. So it's going to require a large number of law enforcement just for security, if you can imagine the, the things that could happen. The security of the vaccines, if nothing else. So it's going to take a large number of personnel. It really exceeds our ability, the size of our police department, to do this by ourselves. That's why we began to look at the possibility of partnering with some of our, our neighboring We were hoping to have a location here in Park City. Like I said, we reached out to them, and ultimately, they declined to participate, which, that's, and it's understandable that they would have concerns about liability and so forth. So once we got past that, which was our first choice, we started to look at what's the best partner arrangement that we could have. We had two. One is to work with Bel Air and one of their schools, but we would also partner with USD 269. The second is with Valley Center and one of the schools in the Valley Center School What I'd like to present to you tonight is for, to request your permission to authorize the Mayor to execute this agreement on behalf of the city to partner with Valley Center in order to establish a point of dispensing. The reason I'm asking for your permission to authorize the Mayor is, Emergency Management thought that they could get the actual agreement, the memorandum of understanding, to me for tonight, but they couldn't get it to me in time. So if we put this off, it'll, it's another two weeks before we can come back unless we have a special council meeting to do it. So it's going to delay our, our planning for a couple more weeks. But if the Mayor could authorize, if you could authorize the Mayor, if that's your decision to do that, he could execute the agreement on behalf of the city. The details of the agreement, I don't have them because I can't provide you with the document. I can tell you that expenses generally are reimbursed by FEMA. We would have some individual expenses as a city that we would have to cover at least in the initial, for instance, paying our personnel. We would have to pay them. We could go back, if everything aligns, we could go back and get reimbursed for that, hopefully from the federal government, or at least for a portion of it, but that's never a guarantee. So we would have some expense there, but we're going to have that expense whether that's in Park City or whether it's in Valley Center. By working together with the City of Valley Center and their police department, we could utilize their personnel. They have a police department that's just about the same size as ours, and that would be a great benefit if this, if something like this happens. It's going to exceed our capability to handle it. So with that, I would open it up. If you have questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them to the best of my ability.
Okay, Jim?
I really have no problem with it. I think it's kind of a good idea to partner with somebody on this. So my really, my only question, I have a feeling everybody in Park City's going to ask, is why in, why physically in Valley Center, why do we have to drive? Is there, what was the backstory for why that location was chosen?
Well, as I said, without revealing who we reached out to here within Park City, we had hoped to have a different venue that would be more centrally located. That didn't work out, so then we're going to the next, the next step. Valley Center has already begun the process of working with their school district, I say their, our school district, for this planning, so they're actually way ahead as far as, because they've been able to identify the venue weeks ago, months ago, and, so they're ahead of us on that. So that's the reason why we're looking at doing it in Valley Center, as opposed to something that was more centrally located, if you want to look at it that way. I don't know if that answers your question. Another issue for me is, we already share, half of our people essentially are in Valley Center School District. Center School District, so we share those schools with them, it's a mutual thing. With Bel Air, and nothing against Bel Air, obviously, but a little different situation with the school that we're talking about.
Sure. Okay, now that, that answers, thank you.
Okay, George?
How you gonna, how can you transport 8,000 people to a deal like that? That sounds like a nightmare to me.
Well...
Because their, their citizens is gonna be there too. It sounds to me like a giant cluster.
Well, I think we all hope it doesn't happen, but obviously, we have to plan for it, and you're right, if it does happen, it's, as much as we plan, it's gonna be a very difficult situation, I think we can, we can all foresee that.
Well, I understand the citizens of Valley Center consider that their private school, and the school ought to be there, but actually, the Valley Center School District is huge. It goes quite all the way over to almost county line, I guess. It's a huge school district, and I know Park City makes up a huge, huge portion of it, but I do know, lest there are some of the citizens there, they consider that their private school, but actually, it's a, it's a huge community.
Well, you're exactly right, sir, I mean, we do share the school district, and as I said, that's one reason why I thought it would be good for us to partner with Valley Center.
I know when they built that new high school, there was some of them wanting to build it closer to, because of our growth, build it closer because more and more, a lot of Park City kids are going to school there.
Yes, you're right. We, we looked at other options here in, in Park City, we weren't really able to identify what we thought was a viable location.
Well, I know they voted here in City Hall, why not here?
Problem we have here is the parking, that's the, if you look at what we have, we do have quite a bit of parking right here, but when you add up the number of spaces for something like this, it's inadequate. So, then you begin to think, okay, where would it spill out if it goes outside of City Hall? We have two lane roads here and ditches, and they really couldn't park along the street here, so they have to park in the neighborhoods and walk in. If you start with a school or a larger facility like that, you've already started off with a large parking lot from the very beginning, and generally also with some fields, hopefully, if things are dry, folks can park in those areas.
Just curious.
There you go, George. John?
Good info and good planning, so I would make a motion to authorize the mayor to approve a memorandum of agreement between the City of Park City and the City of Valley Center for an emergency vaccination location in Valley Center.
Tom?
I'll second it for discussion. I had a question on that, too. I know they had a issue with an explosion over there 10 years ago, and they had trouble getting people in and out of there, and it was just Valley Center residents at that time. You got two roads in, Meridian and 85th Street, basically, I, are you talking about all people trying to get there at one time, or are you talking about setting up times for people to show up for something, and you know?
Well, we're hoping that we'll be able to schedule, and it is obviously gonna have to be a schedule, because you can't have 7,500 people from, just from our city alone, show up at one time to be vaccinated.
Unless it's mandatory, I could see half the people or three fourths of the people here going south somewhere, so...
Right, as I understand, without getting into, you know, a whole lot of the details about the agreement, or the planning, rather, with Emergency Management, folks are gonna be limited by the school district where they reside, so they won't be able to go from, say, here into Wichita in order to be vaccinated, or vice versa.
Most of the square footage of Park City is in 259.
Right.
Which is not 262.
If, if, the option is also you can plan, if the city plans for something other than that, then we can work with that as well. Then I do know what your time, I was there for that explosion in Valley Center, and we do have that issue, but you have to also look at, they had a lot of roads shut down, a lot of emergency vehicles that were involved that we, probably, we hopefully wouldn't have if we're going through a mass vaccination event.
When you're talking about parking, you may not be able to get all the cars in town, much less park them, so.
George?
Well, just a question, because this is pretty political, really. You're asking all the citizens of this town, in a case of emergency, to transport to another city. Was there any of Park City's elected officials involved in this?
In the planning?
In the planning of this?
No, sir, there was not. Now, I've worked with Sean, I've been discussing it with him. This is, it's been accelerated as far as trying to get this planning in place. We've been working on it, but because of what's happened with the coronavirus, we're trying to get this sealed up so that we can be, begin to work on all the other planning that needs to be done on the other side of picking a location.
Well, I ask that because I know who's gonna catch it if it happens, who, who's gonna bear the brunt and who's responsible, that's why I ask if there were any elected officials involved in this.
That's a fair question.
Well, yeah, I knew, I knew, and Emergency Management, the last time I looked at it, John Linder and myself and the mayor were part of that Emergency Management Committee, and if someone took me off of it, they never notified me. So, I guess they did, because I wasn't notified, so I guess someone removed me. I don't know about John or Ray.
I wasn't, I wasn't involved in this, but...
Well, I, I didn't say you were, I just say, we're, we're on it, but we weren't, apparently weren't involved in this, and I'm just curious why? Because you're, you're asking, that's political, you're asking an entire city to move to another city to be vaccinated, and that seems pretty political to me, because we're gonna catch the flag. It's just a fair question, not putting anything on you, Phil.
No, I, I understand, and I do understand what you're saying, and our first choice was not this location, and I don't say that to bad mouth in any way, obviously, Valley Center.
But I will say to the city manager and to the mayor, if I'm not gonna be involved in these emergency management decisions, get me off of it, because when, when it fails and things go wrong, guess who to point their fingers at? The elected official that's on it, and since I wasn't involved, get my name off of it. I want no part of it. If you're not gonna involve me, you're gonna shove me aside and ignore me, and get my name off the document. No offense to you, Phil.
No, sir, I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were on anything.
Last time I saw, the, last time I saw it, that's the three people who were on it, but I wasn't notified of anything about this. But you are asking us to move to, move all of our citizens to another city, that's a political decision in my estimations, and I think it's a fair statement. I think we should have been consulted.
John?
I just questioned, so you're telling me there's nothing available in Park City for us to do it here?
When you look at the requirements for, for what we have to have for site security, it has to be something that is, you can't have everything built right up against it, it has to have a lot of space around it, has to have a lot of parking. Hopefully, it's a public, somewhat publicly accessible building anyway, so that they're set up to be able to receive people that come in. There's a lot of requirements for the site, when we, when we look at our second choices around Park City, we didn't have anything that I felt like would be, yes.
Okay, I mean, I, I don't feel like it's a, you know, a long ways to go, and I'd certainly rather go to Valley Center than into Wichita, and I mean, just getting into Wichita and out of Wichita, I think is, would, however many hundred thousand people in Wichita are gonna probably be doing the same thing. I don't want to battle with that, so I feel like this is probably a really good source or a good place for us to go and get it, so I'm, I'm supportive of it.
Now...
Well, we don't have a place here in Wichita, I mean, Park City to take care of 7,500 people, but we're gonna take, we have 15,000 people in Valley Center, counting their people and our people, and there's gonna be room for them. So, is other cities doing their own thing, or are they partnering up with somebody else, or?
Other cities?
Like Bel Air, are they partnering up with somebody, or are they gonna take care of their own, or?
Bel Air's partnering with USD 259.
And Keachai and?
Keachai, I don't know that they've, I think they, I don't wanna speak to that, so...
Yeah, okay, thank you. Ben?
Sure, I just wanna say that, I mean, I, I appreciate all the thoughts that are brought out on this portion here, but right now, we're talking about, I think even more important is the safety of citizens, and having, having the trust in, in you, Phil, as our, as our police chief, I believe you would have done the exhaustive work to make sure that all avenues were exhausted before making these choices there. I do agree with Councilman Kerr that I think it would be, or, I'm sorry, not Kerr, Caps, that it would have been nice to have those on this bench involved in something as, as serious as this, I think that's something that, that's the reason why we have these committees. But that aside, right now, we're looking at making sure that the citizens of our town are taken care of, and knowing your knowledge and trusting you with that, I would be supportive of this, simply for the fact that I wanna make sure that our citizens aren't held up from getting care because of, of a location difference amongst us.
I appreciate that, I, it, it's always an option, I mean, the council, if you want to delay this and have a discussion outside of the council meeting, we can always do that. Reason I brought it here tonight was the things that are going, as I said, this has been a work in progress for weeks and months, trying to speed things up so that we could move on to the rest of the planning that's on the other side of this decision, but if the council feels its best and they want to meet outside, have a special meeting or workshop to discuss, to discuss this, then, you know, I would defer to your judgment on that.
Okay, George?
Well, you know, respectfully, I, I would really think we ought to have a workshop or something and, and get a, a protocol around here. You know, I, I have in the past used the expression several times here, that we're treated like a rubber stamp, and I, I'm, and I've said it before, and I'll say it again, I'm nobody's rubber stamp. You know, if you want me to buy into something, let me know what's going on. I know, I think I'm being reasonable, you know, if, if I wanted you to do something, I'd come and talk to you. I, I would come and talk to you if I wanted you to do something, and I have asked you to do a couple of things, which so far hasn't happened, but that's neither here nor there. But I, I believe we need a, I believe we need a workshop. I believe we need to discuss protocol about how things are addressed in this city, instead of just people bringing stuff in here and say, here it is, stamp it. I, I, I'm not a rubber stamp.
Tom?
I'd like to say this is a very sensitive issue, and I understand that, but I'd like to see the Emergency Management team get together, go through the protocol, understand what we're being asked to do here and why, and it would give you guys an opportunity to bring a recommendation back, and if we have to have a special meeting sometime later this week or next week, we do that to vote on it.
George?
We, our Emergency Management used to meet every month. The last meeting I was called to was Dee Stewart, was still mayor, was the last time I was called to an Emergency Management meeting, and she had them monthly. She stayed right on top of it, and I haven't been called to one since. And that's what I say, I think we need to have a workshop on protocol, it would spare, it would spare stuff like this. I really believe that.
Okay.
And I'm being sincere, I believe in respect, but if you want me to respect you, then you respect me. That's a, respect is a two-way street.
Jim?
My, my thoughts here just seems like a double-edged sword, I sure, I really respect what you're saying, I think it's a pretty valid point. I wanna be careful not to delay anything that could benefit our citizens, though, so that's why I'm, I, I feel there's two sides.
I wouldn't want to do that either.
Yeah, and I know you don't, so where I'm headed with this is if we wanna sidebar this with a, 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 a committee, then I sure would want it to be addressed really quickly, so we could maybe bring some resolution to this, no later than the next, I don't know, is that even feasible?
Yes, Emergency Management thought they might be able to get the agreement to me for tonight, it, it didn't happen, I think they're kind of overwhelmed right now with all the things that are going on. Like I said, this has been a work in progress for months now, and this, and we just had the first case, as you've probably seen in the news, in Johnson County, first case in Kansas, so I brought this forward just with the thought that if we wanna try to accelerate the process and then be able to continue on with the rest of the planning, that this would get us to that point, but I understand it is a very political issue, and don't, I hope you understand that, but we've had these discussions internally, and we know that it, that it is a sensitive issue, so I, I defer to the council on what, what you think is best as far as that is concerned.
Yeah, I really trust your opinion on all this, that's, you know, you're, you're giving us good thoughts here, so I just kinda wanna, even if we have to have a special council meeting quicker, I'm, I'm okay with that. I just wanna make sure what we're asking you isn't gonna delay the process three months, because now we gotta go back to FEMA and we gotta do this, or, and if that's not a concern, let's, let's, let's have this side meeting and, and bring it back, but that's just where I stand, so wanted to bring that up.
To answer your question, no, it wouldn't delay, it wouldn't be a significant delay.
Okay. Okay, Tom?
That basically, Jim, finished up what I was looking at, I'd like to have the group of three of you, along with the chief and whoever, pull some kind of recommendation together and bring it back to us.
Okay, John?
Oh, I wouldn't either, sir.
Ben?
Sure, I mean, I will say, regarding the, I mean, I understand you said for pods, vaccination seems to be the most prevalent usage right now, I guess, as far as the main concern right now and everybody's thoughts is coronavirus, and while there's no confirmed cases here in Sedgwick County, there's also no vaccination really for it, so I, I don't think this would be in the case of, if we don't do something right now, we're actually gonna hurt our citizenry, our citizens here, because there's nothing in order to do something like that in an epidemic case. That said, though, I would agree with, with Jim here on this, is that if we need to have a special meeting, I, I would, I would be in favor of that, too. Again, I trust, I trust your judgment on this, I understand what, what George is saying as well, there is involvement, because, you know, come every, every four years, we're the ones that have to go back and ask for a job, and they're gonna ask us why we did votes based upon, or votes based upon what was brought before us, and so I, I agree with both, both sentiments, but I don't think we should delay it inevitably, but at the same point, I guess I would say that I don't see one week or so being hurtful, I don't think it needs to be necessarily the management, management team, Emergency Management team, unless those, they're on their felt that way, I think we have a document, we got an idea of where we're going, and council can decide from there.
Randy?
Thanks for bringing this to us. Does Valley Center have to meet on this to allow Park City residents to come into their city? And if so, have they met, or when did they meet?
No, they haven't, I think they're waiting for us to see what our decision is, and then it'll be passed on to them, and so their council would also have to approve, because it is a memorandum of understanding, so...
Okay, thank you.
George?
Well, I wanna make something plain, I've known Chief Boston for years and years and years, and no one has more respect for, for Chief Boston than I do, not questioning your judgment at all, I just, I just say that, you know, my name's on it, John's name's on it, and Ray's name's on it, or were, and like I say, if my name's not on it now, somebody removed it and didn't tell me, and if, if those decisions are gonna be made, I think we ought to be, ought to be notified, and, and I'll give you this, you might not have even known about that deal, you probably didn't, probably didn't.
No, I didn't.
But understand, no one's got more respect for, for Chief Boston than I do, and I've known you since you was a real young guy.
All right, so we do have a motion and second, so we need at least vote on that. So, not seen any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Who are my two ayes?
I voted for.
Three ayes.
I'm voting.
All right.
Huh? Had so much discussion, can we just restate what we're voting on?
It was as on the agenda.
Yeah.
That makes it easier, so in support of it.
It was moved and second, and then we had a lot of discussion from that point, so, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. That was opposed. All right. And that fails again. Three or four. All right. Thanks, chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That was the last item on the agenda, so we'll start with Jim.
I have nothing else to add.
Brandy?
I have nothing.
George?
Well, the other thing I have is, is I am a defender of Ward 3. And several months ago, I came up with a deal about, I had a citizen approach me about this one-side parking on the streets. And there's, there's, actually, it's pretty simple. There's only three, I believe it's three, four streets involved. There's Beaumont from Hydronic to, to Ace Park View, Cloverdale. There's Lancaster from Hydronic to, to Ace Park View. And there's Judson. And the other street that is involved is Ventnor. And I, I have never got a satisfactory answer to this about Ventnor because it is the same width as these cross streets over here in Ward 3. Yet all they'll tell me was the fire department says you got to have, you can't have parking on both sides. And my question is, why does that apply in Ward 3 and it doesn't apply in Ward 2? And, and all I can get is, well, that's what the fire department says. Well, I don't know. I, I, I've never got an answer for that over the years and I've asked several times. But the other thing that I would really like to see change is years ago, when the school buses used to pull up in front of Chisholm Trail School and let the kids off to their own independence in front of the school. And then the buses would come around Cloverdale and make that right turn onto Beaumont and go up and get on Hydronic. Well, the only reason that that one-side parking was put there was so the school buses would have room to do that. Well, the school buses haven't done that for years. And I don't know why that one-side parking still stays there. I don't see any need for it. And somewhere along the line, I'd like to see a discussion on this. All, all I'm asking is fairness.
Do you want to get rid of all one-sided parking?
No. No. I, I understand. I understand that because of the fire code, that it needs to be that way. But if that's the fire code, then why isn't Ventnor that way? Why?
So you want Ventnor changed?
Well, I think somebody ought to say, why, it's not.
That would take the council action, wouldn't it? If we want to make a street one-side parking? Doug, would that be right?
Yes, we have to amend the ordinance.
Well, I, I just wonder why there's not fair treatment.
All right. Let's bring to the next council meeting, change Ventnor to one-side parking.
What about that one-side parking up here on, on Beaumont? I, you know, that was put there so those school buses could make the turn. And school buses don't come that way no more. They haven't for years.
So you want to get rid of one-side parking on Beaumont? And remove one-side parking on Beaumont?
Originally, the guy wanted one-side parking on, on Lancaster, but I give up on that.
You want to do something with Lancaster?
No.
I do.
Let it go. John? It's frustrating. Sometime I feel like I'm just a dead log, you know, just, I talk and nobody listens.
I just listened to you.
I know you did, right?
If you want to change it, it'll be on the next amendment.
Okay. And I appreciate it.
Tom?
I'd like to clarify that the fire department bought a piece of equipment that couldn't get around the current streets with parking on both sides, and that's why it was done. And Ventnor's a nice straight street and it might be that they didn't feel like it, they had to limit the parking.
Well, that, that's the whole thing. All I've ever asked for is a question, Tom. And if they say that's so, then leave it alone.
Well, I think it was parking...
All I've asked for is the answer.
Well, and I think the fire department asked for that because they couldn't get a piece of equipment through there is the only reason that we went with one-side parking.
If you look at Denver Street and you look at those side streets in Ward 3 between the, the horseshoe, they're all straight shots, too. They're all straight shots, just like Ventnor. But if the fire department wants to say that, then I'll say, leave it alone. But I, I would like to hear them say.
I'm just passing information.
You know, if, if I can't fight for my, for the people in my ward, then who's going to? Who's going to? That's, that's what I get paid for. That's who I represent. And I think they ought to get fair treatment.
I've got a couple highway wamp of things I wanted to update. And I let Sean know this afternoon, our 61st Street revised proposal, it was turned into the tip for a little bit more money, has been approved today. KDOT announced at the meeting again that northbound 135 is getting ready to go the southbound way, which means it'll get cut down to one lane in some areas while they're doing work on it, and it'll last for a year. So those that have jumped up on Saturday morning, tried to get to the south side of town and get backed up, through back to 29th Street, it's going to go from the north, and start doing the north the same way, although redoing some of that bridge work. They also have something right now that's out online to do a survey for the transportation of the future. I've got a copy of it here and I think the city's probably gotten an email on it saying there's a survey out there. If not, I'll get this to the city. So anybody that wants to go on there, maybe we can get this sent out to council members and let you do the survey. It has to do with parking ride, buses, bike lanes, paths, streets, roads, all kinds of stuff on the survey and how people feel about it. So that's all I got.
Alvin?
So if you haven't been by 81 Speedway, you need to go. The cool-looking new sign, the fence is up and it's looking, looking great out there. So I'm ready for race season.
Ben?
Just a couple of things here real quick. One, I did get opportunity today through, to take part in an update from the Sedgwick County Health Department on the coronavirus there. And it was very informative there, what they shared with us and just passing some of that along. We are still at a low risk of outbreak or whatever. Obviously, that can change at any time once there is an infection in the area, but still remain at low risk. A lot of the things are just taking the necessary precautions. They're doing the things that, oh, we probably should have been doing for the last however many years we've been alive, like washing your hands and, and stuff like that. But as long as you're taking care of those precautions there, it does remain, still not a tremendous chance of outbreak there. Seems to be the elderly that are, are becoming the most, well, are the most at risk through this. Those over 60 seem to be the rate, age that are most likely to contract and then to also mortality issues there. So again, just encourage you all as the fear and the news is out there, trust science on this there. Take normal precautions. The symptoms range, they said, from regular cold symptoms to mild flu symptoms. So just be precautious. If you feel like you have something, contact the Kansas or the Sedgwick County Health Department first or KDAG. But don't, don't freak out there over it. It could just be a cold or it could just be the flu there on that. Second thing I wanted to bring to our attention or bring here tonight, many of you over the last week or two have received your value, or your property tax appraisal notices, and there has been a very dramatic increase overall. Most people have found on their property taxes there. There are some steps that you can take there. The county appraisers office will be doing appeal hearings beginning March the 17th. That will go through, that will go through May 14th. On the back of your appraisal form, there is a place where you can fill out there what you feel the approximate value should be, sign it, take it in, mail it in or whatever, and they will set up a meeting there to do that. I encourage you to make sure that you take steps there that, that would back up your, your idea of what your appraisal should be. But with that there, that's obviously having an impact on our citizens here. Which leads to this last part, there's Kansas in a recent poll, or recent survey by Wallet Hub was down to be the 47th highest tax rate overall when they look at issues of income tax, real estate tax, vehicle property tax and sales and excise tax. And so we, we do have a state that is already high enough taxed. And with this appraisal increase coming as well, I would strongly hope that as we head into budget season, we do what we can to make sure that the, it's not a double whammy in a sense for, for citizens here.
So the only thing I reported is convention tourism meeting was last week here. And one of the new things is Wichita Force Indoor Football will now be at Hartman Arena. So they'll have six home games that start April 4th as the, the home opener. So kind of excited to get them back now that we have the wings back as well. So tickets, I think they were saying anywhere from 12 bucks to 40, about $40. So pretty cool, pretty exciting. So that's all I have. Make a motion to adjourn.
George?
Well, I, I would second it, but I'd like to say one thing is we just give tonight, we voted to send, looked like $55,000 at the Hartman Arena. And yet I look on the internet and it says Hartman Arena, Valley Center, Kansas. And I think the world ought to know that Hartman Arena is not in Valley Center, Kansas. They're in Park City, Kansas.
Okay. Tom?
I'd like to make the comment, that's something that Hartman Management has been fighting for years. Anybody can go out and set up a web domain and put any address on it, and they've got that, and they've got a ticket sales office that they've been trying to work with for years that's somewhere else that uses the same address. But I can guarantee everybody at Hartman uses Park City and they want everybody else to use Park City. So it's not internal air, it's external.
Okay. That's fair enough, but you know, right's right and wrong's wrong.
I, I can tell you that, that they promote Park City.
$55,000 is a lot of money.
Tom? I would just say this, I've been to several events up there and people who sing, the artists and all that, I mean, they usually say, hello, Park City. I mean, and really, they push Park City most of that. Now, sometimes they will say, and they, and I'm trying to think the manager up there, but she said, they know they're flying into Wichita or they're coming to Wichita. So sometimes they, they say Wichita. But I tell you, they, you can tell, they really reiterate Park City on it. So I don't think that's part of the Hartman staff that's doing that.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, I can.
Oh, I can.
All right. We got a motion and a second, not sending any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I pass this 7-0. Thank you.